Okay, let's go ahead, six o'clock, so let's go ahead and call the order, um, the, can you hear me? Is this on? Okay, good, the light's on, but didn't sound like it. Parowan, uh, um, is there any declaration of conflicts with any of the agenda items this evening?
No.
No. No? Okay, everyone says no. Um, did you get a chance to look over the minutes for April second? I know I found two small things that I emailed Cali. One was a typo and one was, um, in reference to, um, the estate, um, what was it? That they said space for storage or parking? And it was supposed to be and, or something like that.
Yeah.
Something minor. But does anybody else have a, anything that they saw that needed correcting or added or changed? Then I will just need a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from April second, twenty twenty-five, with the corrections that have been mentioned.
All second.
Okay, all of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. I need a motion for us to, um, go out of our working meeting and into the public hearing.
I'll move to, move into a public hearing to hear public comment regarding the proposed amendments to Title fifteen of the Parowan City Municipal Code.
Sir, second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so at this time, um, we will, um, ask the, uh, public to come up to the mic. Please state your name, um, and just, if you're a resident. And, um, we will have a time limit of three minutes. And so if, um, you go longer than that, um, all motion. You can sit back down. And if nobody else has anything else to say, then you can come back up to the mic. But this way we keep it, um, fair for everyone to get a chance to, um, make their comment. So, who's gonna be first? Okay.
I'm Cindy Smith. Um, couple of questions about the proposals that you guys have redone. One is on, um, short-term rentals. It says, "Short-term rentals will only be allowed for property owners who live on site." How does that work? You rent from an owner and they're in the same bedroom with you? Or they're in the same house with you? I'm not understanding that change.
So, do, do you wanna have a back-and-forth dialogue? I mean, it's up to the chair if you wanna, we, we can answer questions as we go.
Yeah, are we asking questions or are we just stating our?
Um, I thought we, maybe we would just state it, um, and then we could,
Then we can address them.
During our discussion, we can address, um, that.
Okay.
And clarify, or...
Okay. So, I don't know of any short-term rentals anywhere where the owner lives on site unless it's a... I can't even think of an idea. Not even a Brianhead, I don't think. Any of the owners live on site. I just, that just hit me wrong, that owners would, would, uh, be on site. Um, the other thing is that to ensure Parowan retains its small-town feel, we will no longer allow high-density urban-style multifamily housing such as townhomes, condominiums, apartment buildings, and planned unit developments. Okay? Planned unit developments have, often have narrow streets and other design elements that are not consistent with rural. So, but you're going to allow twin homes, which I'm, all in agreeance with twin homes. Cedar City has twin homes and it's a great addition to Cedar City. The problem is that we've got quite a few planned unit developments. Um, and some of the conditional use do allow for planned unit developments. Um, the only thing about a planned unit development is mainly the streets are not city streets. They're, they are narrower. And so, what are you guys, I don't see anything about what you're proposing for the street size or anything yet? If they're gonna change anything about the street size. I didn't see anything about that. Um, also allowing mixed-use residential and commercial zones. Parowan doesn't have a big commercial zone and we don't have a big R-three zone. We do need more R-three zone. But in here, it talks about R-three zone being, uh, permitting stacked three-plexes and four-plexes. But then you limit the height. So, not sure what a stacked three-plex and a stacked four-plex, but you're limiting the height on that. However, the construction and layout must be varied in such a way to resemble, to not resemble cookie-cutter homes in style or layout. So, I'm not sure what is classified as a cookie cutter. I didn't see any description what a cookie cutter was. Um, I think that needs to be described, what cookie cutter is. Um, allowing smaller lot and home sizes in R-two and R-three. I think that's a really good thing to improve affordability. Um, I do think that is really good. Um, but when you're talking about R-three, then you're talking about more than three units. So, the lot size, we don't have lot sizes that... Most of lot sizes, when Parowan is, was divided up, it is, um, a block. And those are an acre and a quarter. And when you divide those up, what's left is mostly half acres. And so, half acres will be split into quarter acres, which allows for R-two to do a twin home. But then what is gonna be the R-three? How, I don't think we're gonna increase in any R-three. I don't think our R-three capacity is gonna increase with what we have available in town. So, that was just my thoughts on what I reviewed on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lawrence Bagley. And it, uh, I just wanted to ask, are they gonna build a, uh, water tank for, is it in the proposal? When they build all this property out here? Are they gonna put in a big water tank like they did in... And it, uh, and the inner structure? The inner structure's supposed to, uh, the contractor is gonna take care of all the inner structure. Is anywhere else, anything that's built in any state, the contractor pays for all inner structure. So, I was just wondering if that was gonna happen? And it, uh, pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
It's working.
You need to talk into it.
Okay.
Please state your name.
I'm Larry Zajac, I'm a resident. So, I, I wanted to say with this Rural Done Right, that one of the things that I don't think is being discussed as much as it maybe could, is that Rural Done Right is actually upzoning. And upzoning, um, plays itself out, generally speaking, in an increase in density in a number of different ways. So, if you were in ten thousand square-foot lots and you reduce them to seventy-five hundred square-foot lots, you get one extra lot for each three lots, which means it's a twenty-five percent increase in density. Now, in Rural Done Right, admittedly, there's some trade-offs and there's some other things that are being done. And I think Dan Jessen is probably able to address that best at, at some point. Um, I sent to all the commission members in the city council, a document off of Planopedia. That's kind of a couple paragraphs about, uh, re, um, about upzoning. And it presents some pros and cons. And I want to apologize to Cecily and Shane. I didn't have your email addresses, so I gave you hard copies of that. And, uh, maybe I'll get your email addresses after a bit here. So, as I went through this document, again, I'm gonna apologize because I didn't do it till this afternoon. Normally, I would get this and look at it and, and handle this differently. So, I first wanna say, addressing this Rural Done Right draft, um, code, uh, I think that maybe the outlining could be different. If we look at the first page, you'll notice that it starts with the number one. And then as we indent, it continues with yet another number one. I suspect those might be better outlined as a number one and then an indent that would be an A, B, C, D. Um, that's done in a couple places in this document. And then towards the tail end of this document, there's not really any outlining at all. Well, I shouldn't say there's not any outlining. The outlining is bulleted. So, if we wanted to talk about something in fifteen thirty-six point oh six oh, I might have to say fifteen thirty-six point oh four oh, area width and yard regulations under the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet. And assume that you all could count the same way I do, um, we'd be talking about the same bullet. So, I, that's all I'm gonna say about outlining. The other thing that I, another thing is, um, I had a play in this at one point. We wrote, uh, External Accessory Dwelling Unit Code. And the code got published, but there was one step left that needed to be accomplished to really make it a viable code. And that was to go into each of the zoning descriptions and add a, a sentence or something under conditional, or under permitted uses that said accessory dwelling units were allowed. Because in our, let me find it here.
Larry, I'm gonna ask if there was anybody else with a comment?
Then I'll be happy to step back.
'Cause he will sit down and let you ch- (laugh). If anyone else has comments? I'm getting head-shaking nose. Okay, you can continue.
Okay, thank you. So, under our code fifteen point forty-nine point oh two O B and little a, it basically says in there that any, any of the code, to allow an EADU, it must specifically state that in the zoning description. And right now, our, the, the closest we come is in R-one A. It, it actually says, uh, accessory buildings. So, I don't know legally how deep we get into language, but is an accessory building the same as an accessory dwelling? Because the code specifically says it needs to say accessory dwelling. So, if you want, if we want to have EADUs, we need to decide where we want them. And we should probably fix that code now while we're fixing, doing this big change. I also wondered in fifteen thirty-two point oh one O, forever, our code has stated to, the purpose was to provide for high-density residential, and so on and so on. I wonder if that should be changed to medium-density residential?
What is that?
Uh, fifteen point thirty-two point oh one O, the purpose?
I think that's R-two, right?
R-two, yes, sorry. And then when we get back towards the, uh, let's see, fifteen point thirty-six point oh four oh, so it's really in the general commercial district. So, under the second bullet, under area, it talks about, "There shall be no minimum lot area requirements for commercial lots used for commercial uses permitted in the zone except for gas pumps and off-street parking requirements as defined by the Planning Commission." Um, as a former member of the Planning Commission, I would just ask what the guidance is for, for gas pumps and where that would be found. Because I personally would have a terrible time trying to figure out what that might be. I think off-street parking is probably in another part of our code. And then also, we talk about gasoline pumps again down in the, I don't know, two, three, four. About the seventh or eighth bullet down, under non-fire-resistant building setbacks. We talk about gas pumps again. And in this case, it re, it's regarding a setback. But it doesn't really talk about the area of the lot for gas pumps. And so, one of the questions I have, would an applicant be allowed to put a dwelling above a gas station? This doesn't seem to address that. And I just wondered what we, what you thought about that. And then, under fifteen point, fifteen thirty-six point, uh, oh five oh, modifying regulations? Number, number two. It says, "Mixed-use dwellings will be held in single ownership unless permitted through the planned unit development approval process," and requirements in Parowan Municipal Code fourteen point twenty. Um, it was my understanding that we would not have planned unit developments if Rural Done Right was approved and, and adopted as code. And then again, under fifteen thirty-six point oh four oh, area width and yard regulations, there's another mention of gas pumps. And then under the third bullet, under that same, uh, title, "No requirements except for mixed-use dwellings, which must have residential units of at least five hundred square feet per unit located above ground floor with commercial use below." And again, I wonder, does, does that imply that I could have a gas station above, in a commercial zone? Or apartment above a gas station? And the same thing in the last bullet, above fifteen thirty-six point oh five oh. And under fifteen thirty-seven point oh four oh, area width and yard regulations? The... The fifth bullet and the third sub-bullet talks about parking and emergency access requirements are met. So, the re, um, to read in, read what that's saying in full. So, the bullet says, "Sideyard setback. Zero setback permitted if parking and emergency access requirements are met." And I wonder which requirements? Are we talking about requirements that might be imposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission? Or are we talking about our existing parking code, or both? Because down below, under modifying regulations, fifteen thirty-seven point oh five oh, it says, "Parking must be accommodated on-site or through city-approved shared parking agreements." So, that is yet another, um, requirement that sort of just stands out and away from where you might look for parking requirements. I wanna thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Sorry, Cindy Smith. On fifteen point two eight, I just didn't understand cottage courtyard or cluster subdivision. Uh, "Subject to planned unit development approval." But they're not wanting to do planned units, but they're, a cottage courtyard, "With a density limit to four residential units per acre within the zone." So, it contradicts what the Rural Done Right is, if you're making smaller lots. But it doesn't define what a cottage courtyard or cluster subdivision is. If you're putting roads in yourself, I mean, what is that? What is the cottage cluster idea? Um, is it you do a subdivision, but then you're limiting, you're making the lot sizes quarter acres? But it says, "Subject to planned unit development approval requirements." Anyway, I have a question about that one.
I'll, I'll address all that.
Okay, go ahead.
We gave you enough time to get the courage to come up, right?
Well, I was trying to figure out whatever the thing's done. My name is Brian Whitmore, I'm a new hire, a new guy here. I've only been here like six, seven years. I was just wondering, I don't know what they're talking about. I haven't read any of that. I was just wondering, are there plans in place to keep Parowan from becoming Cedar? 'Cause I come from a small town, sixty minutes from Vegas, and pretty much ruined my town. Everybody come out there, started building housing tracks and everything, apartments. And we already have power problems here. So, if we start putting in a whole bunch of units, what's that look like down the road for, you know, for Parowan? So, I just wanna put my two cents in about that. I, you know, you wanna come out here and build a home? That's not a problem, you know, you're more than welcome to. To come and build, you know, a whole bunch of apartments or townhomes or... I noticed that was in there and I just, that's the only thing I've seen as what's on the agenda. So, I don't know any of these numbers they were talking about. So, I really don't know what I'm talking about here. I just kinda was trying to put my two cents in. If we don't watch the growth and just let it go willy-dilly, then we'll basically be another Cedar City. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any movement. Anyone else, any more comments? Okay. Then I would take a motion for us to exit the public hearing and to go back into our, um, regular scheduled meeting.
I'll move to close the public hearing and re-enter our regular scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Can I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, now we're at the point where, um, we as a committee, um, discuss and, um, I guess we'll start with, Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I took a lot of notes and I can, I can probably answer majority of those questions. And then, and then of course, if the commission wants to address anything or discuss, and then we can get on with the rest of our discussions. Um, so part of, um, just, just in starting, and I don't, I'm not throwing this out there as a criticism by all means, I think everybody here has a life. Um, a lot of the concerns and questions that have come up have been things that we have talked about, um, uh, quite a bit with the council and then the Planning Commission and all that stuff. So, I'll do a real quick recap because I could probably do a two-hour presentation to go into all the nitty-gritty. Um, a, a fair amount of the things that Cindy was referencing to, Cindy Smith, um, are coming from a, for lack of a better word, is a marketing piece of what the overall intent was of Rural Done Right. Um, if you, if you wanna get really into the nitty-gritty, you'd have to review the, the actual code and the, and the changes of, of the code. Appreciate Larry's input. Of course, Larry's one to go through and with a, with a fine-toothed, uh, comb and, and catch those little details. So, to answer specific questions. Short-term rental, um, modification is part of the overall Rural Done Right things that we are doing. It is not a part of what we're doing today. We will be separately looking at short-term rental code. Um, it is an entire thing all by itself, that the Planning Commission has been intending on implementing some short-term, um, rental, um, regulation. Um, we've been talking about it for, what, Larry? A year and a half? Um, so, um, it is something that, part of the overall, um, approach that we wanna look at. But it, it was, um, not something that was gonna be grouped into what we're doing today. What we're doing today is specifically looking at the zoning code, um, of, of, of what you can and can't do, um, on a permitted basis, on a conditional basis, or, or what it would now potentially be prohibited in the different zones. Um, short-term rental code will probably be bigger than that and, and talk, unless, unless the Planning Commission wants to say you can do this in this zone or that in that zone. We just haven't had that conversation to even get there. So, it didn't seem appropriate to include it in the zoning modification at this point. As far as planned unit developments, there've been quite a few compliment, comments tonight about planned unit developments. Um, and in the, in the marketing piece, um, it talks about no planned unit developments. Um, and as we, as we have discussed with the Planning Commission, this does not get rid of completely one-hundred percent planned unit developments. Um, what it does is it's, is that they would, they would become extremely limited in their use. Um, but they are still necessary, um, for example, in a mixed-use environment where you have retail on the bottom, you're in a commercial zone, you have retail on the bottom, you have residential up above. If you wanted to sell off individual units as separate owned apartments, the only way to do that is with a planned unit development, um, process. Um, as you basically, um, describe how the common ownership is going to work, how the individual ownership is gonna work, how title is gonna be conveyed, um, if there's some sort of an association or something like that. That needs to be done following our planned unit development process. Similar, if you do a commercial, let's say you do a mall, a strip mall type thing where, where there's common, um, walls that are, the ownership in a, in one commercial, A, unit is different than commercial unit B, and they're all on it in a combined property, that we still need the planned unit development code to be able to do things like that. What this does restrict is planned unit developments, the way that they are commonly thought of as basically just a way to get higher density into a subdivision, into an area. Um, historically with Parowan, we have had, um, we've had a lot size limitation of, um, as it was stated correctly by, I believe, Cindy, um, ten thousand square feet, um, for the first residential unit. So, that's approximately a quarter acre. And that has been the case in R-one, R-two, and R-three zones. And then you need additional square footage for the additional residential units. And that additional square footage changes based on R-one, R-two, or R-three. Most development, as they come in and propose a development, unless they're comfortable with quarter-acre lots, the very next thing out of their, out of their mouth is, well, we wanna do a planned unit development then, so that we can, translation, planned unit development means that they can, they can, um, get, um, creative with our code. Um, as Cindy mentioned, street widths, that's a common modification that people in a planned unit development wanna have. Um, tighter, smaller lots, um, re, different, um, setbacks on buildings from property lines, and on and on and on. There's a lot of things that, that get negotiated into a planned unit development. The Rural Done Right concept is, we know that there is a, um, a desire for some affordable housing. And it, it is not, and I, I was talking with Larry beforehand, this isn't upzoning in an exclusive sense. Um, you could look at it and say, well, if you can't do condos and you can't do apartments and you can't do townhomes anymore, then this really is an entire, um, upzoning of the city. then this really is an entire, um, upzoning of the city. And, and as he mentioned, there is balance to this, which is, which is what, um, or I think Larry used the word trade off. Um, Rural Done Right is not meant to just upzone the city. It is meant to find a balance. It actually would allow smaller lots by right in an R two than, than it currently is. It would allow more twin homes per acre than currently allowed per acre. Um, so right now, in order to do a twin home or a duplex, um, if you build a single family residence, you need ten thousand square feet in an R two. To add that second residential unit to make it a duplex, you have to go up to thirteen thousand square feet. Our code says you have to add three thousand square feet for, for the second residential unit. So translation, a duplex would require a developer to do thirteen thousand square foot lots if you did a subdivision of duplexes. Under the Rural Done Right, you're able to do ten thousand square foot lots for a duplex. So as I think it was Larry, maybe it was somebody else pointed out, you can actually get more duplexes per acre under Rural Done Right than you, than before Rural Done Right. Same thing with single family homes. Right now in an R two, you can only do a ten thousand square foot lot for a single family home. In Rural Done Right, you can do a single family home in a seventy five square foot lot. It gets even smaller availability in an R three area. You can do a six thousand square foot lot. However, by not allowing planned unit developments, other than with a few exceptions, and I'm going to get to the cottage courtyard slash cluster subdivision that Cindy talked about, we are giving away by right some of the things that is usually the goal when you're doing a planned unit development. We're going to say, yes, you can have smaller lots by right. What we're not doing is we're not going to have any give on the street widths or on any of the other standard things required by our code in a subdivision. So we've probably given to a developer the thing that they want most, and that is smaller lots. Because the, the reality of a building and trying to make some sort of an affordable product, the single biggest cost is land. The second single biggest cost is all of the infrastructure that you have to put in. And to answer the gentleman, and I forgot his, no, I didn't. It was Lawrence Bagley. To answer Lawrence's question, we do require the developer to put in all the infrastructure that's required. If they have to put in infrastructure that is bigger than their subdivision requires, it's what we call system level infrastructure, then we get into a negotiation with them. Um, if they put in something that's going to benefit the rest of the citizens and allow for more growth in their own subdivision, then we can't require them to do that. That's, that's called an exaction that is greater than, than their impact on the city. And, and that can't be forced on them. That has to be negotiated to something that is fair. And that's Utah law, and that's been litigated. So we can figure out something that, that works along those lines, but they are required to put in all of the streets, water, sewer, power, everything that their subdivision requires to support them. Um, back to the P U D conversation. So on one hand, we're saying certain types of structures are more urban. I think the, and I didn't catch your name. That was the one name I didn't catch, said, don't have Parowan become like Cedar. Um, we are saying, one of the goals is we want to stay ru- rural. We want to stay small town. So it's finding the right balance of saying certain types of things maybe don't fit in this rural environment. On the other hand, we recognize that we are in the middle of a housing crisis, and there's no affordable houses in, in, in Parowan right now. Hardly, I, I wouldn't say there's hardly anything on the market. Certainly not in any sort of quantity whatsoever. So how do we allow and find a way to have, um, a new beginning family be able to, um, buy a house, build a house? Um, you may not have kids, and you may don't care because you already own your house. But if you have your kids and you want them to hang around in Parowan, is there any place that they can afford to buy? So again, Rural Done Right's trying to strike that balance so that a, a, a young family or somebody that doesn't have a lot of people in their family can buy a more affordable home versus somebody that needs a larger home with more beds and, and things like that. Okay, let me get back to the thing. So street size, under no planned unit developments, again, under limited planned unit developments, street sizes, we're just not going to negotiate on those. Um, we want to have the, the typical streets, um, and other things that go along with, with that. Um, mixed use, there was a question asked about mixed use and stacked threeplexes and fourplexes. Again, we have covered this. I understand everybody wasn't in all the meetings. What that really means is, um, we're not getting rid of all multifamily type housing. What we're saying is, is in an R three area, you can still do what's called a triplex, or you can do a fourplex. Um, the word in the marketing piece was stacked, um, and that, maybe that wasn't the best word because it, it alludes to going vertical. What it means is, is that, um, you, we, we are not adjusting the height limitation. Right now, the height limitation in all zones is thirty five feet. What we're saying is, is it can be multi-story, like you can have two and one half stories or thirty five feet, whichever is, um, less. Um, but what it, what we are saying is, is we want to have things, and there's, if you read in the language that's put in the code, it, it's trying to achieve, um, something that looks more similar to a single family house type look, look, which means varied roof lines, um, offset doors and things like that, so that it's not... And again, the word cookie cutter isn't anywhere in the code. That was in the marketing piece to try to convey what the, what the attempt was, to try to avoid a, basically a townhouse style. Looks like you, you, you drew a, a house, you hit copy and you hit paste times eight, and you stack them horizontally, right? That's, that's what the marketing piece was saying we're trying to avoid, and the way we do that in code is saying you can have a maximum of a threeplex or a fourplex, um, on a single lot in R three within the density restrictions. Um, moving on to additional questions. Oh, before we leave R three, um, Cindy's right, there's not a lot of R three in town. A fair amount of the R three that's in town is already, there's already buildings on it. So in order to really maximize the R three possibilities, you'd have to buy it, tear down the buildings, and build something else. There are a few, um, unbuilt open, um, lots that are R three. That's when you look at specifically what is there now. But when you look at our general plan, and it, and more importantly, the future land use map and the annexation boundaries, you recognize that there is a lot of property. Probably the majority of it is between the current city and the freeway. There's a lot of infill that can go in, in that area, and on our master plan, that is all zoned medium density to high density. It isn't zoned yet, but that's, it's planned for that density. Um, which means if somebody wants to annex, and we annex them, the general plan would suggest that the zoning be either in R two or in R three in that area, depending on exactly which parcels you're talking about. The point being is, is, and we do have an, an annexation, um, application that is in right now um, for fifty acres, which is out by the freeway. Um, it's probably fifty five, forty five percent R two, R three is what our general plan shows for that. So, so what we do with Rural Done Right will be what is available to whoever builds that and what they can do. So there's a fair amount of acreage in the next little bit that could be potentially built out in R three. So it is important that, that we kind of set the, the tone for what, not the tone, actually, the land use code for what can happen in those areas, um, rather than they come in with an application. Our code is what it is, and they have a right to do what our code says you can do. So this is about, um, steering our future and saying, what do we want to see Parowan look like as those areas build out? Okay, a few other things to, maybe I'll jump now to Larry's comments. I already talked about upzoning and trade offs. Um, Larry used the word formatting. I mean outlining. I would use the word formatting. Um, absolutely, formatting needs to be, um, made consistent. Um, in some cases, it was a, it's a copy and paste into Word, and Word re-numbers them, where it should go one and then little A, little B. Sometimes it automatically just double numbers them. Um, and then another point, um, I, I was working on it, copying and pasting it in. It came, they came in as bullets. So those will get cleaned up for sure, so that they're consistent with the rest of our code. Good catch. I was focused on the purpose and the intent and the words. Hadn't even noticed that, but we'll correct that. E A D U's, um, um, we, we do have a separate section of E A D U code, but Larry's absolutely correct. Most, um, of the land use code that I've seen, they, they actually define it right in the zones. And now is a great time to add it in. If we could do it by, a part of a motion, that we add in, um, a permitted use of, of, um, E A D U's consistent with the separate E A D U code that's already has its own chapter. Um, that would be a very easy thing to add in, um, and now is the time to do it while we essentially have the hood open and we're tinkering on the engine. Um, additionally, the, the, you know, um, now's the time to address things like the high density to medium density in the R two area. That's, that's, that's what we would typically describe in R two would be more of a medium type density. Um, you could say higher density if you're referring to R one, but it does say high, so we probably ought to switch that to medium. That would be an easy fix. Um, gas pumps, um, the way I look at this is, um, we have, we need some consistency with our parking code. It's always been a pet peeve of mine. Um, basically our, if I can just generally summarize, our parking code gives just a ton of latitude and, and it just expects the planning commission to be experts on parking. So when somebody comes in with an application, we're going to look at it and know exactly what it needs to be. Um, I would love to have more defined parking code. Um, and I thought a lot about that as, as I was working on this. Um, and I thought that it was okay to, to, to do what is consistent with our current parking code that says the planning commission needs to approve these things. Um, I would love to come back and, and, um, develop a parking code. I believe the way that most of these things are written now, um, where it, where it defaults to the planning commission. If we had a separate section on parking code later, I think we could probably leave all of the zoning code as is mentioning that. That's my, that's my opinion on that. And, um, I guess if, if any of you had a, a different opinion or wanted to tackle it or remove it now, um, the, I thought it was better left in and needing to be fixed or cleaned up than not addressed at all. Um, specifically, if we're talking about creating a downtown commercial zone and not addressing parking whatsoever, you could potentially have somebody develop with zero setbacks all of their property and not address parking whatsoever. At least written the way it is, it, it says, okay, that's not something you have a right to do without the planning commission having some input on parking. Um, as far as gas pumps, Gary talk, uh, Gary, wow, I don't know where that came from. Larry, probably I was combining gas with Larry. Gary talked about gas pumps. Um, that was, um, that was a, um, a, a, something I looked at when I was actually looking at Cedar City's code. They have zero setbacks, and they carved out that exception so that they can make sure that that's addressed. Um, I think for the, for the intent that Larry was talking about is, um, if you have a gas station going in, it needs some special consideration. Distances, setbacks, um, similar to parking, I almost look at them at the same. You're going to want planning commission to take a, a hard look at that if somebody's doing gas pumps. Um, because other, because what is gas, what is a gas pump itself? Is it a structure? Well, maybe, if they have the large, um, canopy over the top of it, that's clearly a structure. But otherwise, it's a structure. But is your gas pump out in front by the road a structure? And I would think that anytime somebody came in with a gas station application in a commercial zone, it gives us the latitude to say, let's take a hard look at that. Um, may we want to come back in and develop that further, possibly. If you, if you don't feel comfortable with the way it is, we can, we can just leave it out. Um, but I, I definitely thought that, um, it wasn't a bad idea to, to put in there when we're talking zero setbacks. Um, the other way you could deal with it is deal with it in your, um, table of uses. But theoretically, you may want to have a gas station in, even in a downtown commercial area. So I don't know if Parowan, that's ever going to happen. Um, but, you know, I don't know what Maverick and Chevron down here, if that's considered in the downtown commercial area, but there are gas, gas pumps. They're in their, in our, in our commercial area for sure. Um, depending on where we choose to add some general commercial, sorry, downtown commercial. If we ever add that zone into our zoning map, at that point, we could probably address that. So that was just kind of my thoughts, but great input. Um, parking code, cottage courtyard. Okay. I'm going to steal the screen real quick, and I'm going to put up some images so people understand what we're talking about. And again, we did, um, talk about this. I don't know if I showed a lot of examples of this when the planning commission was looking at it. But this is another example of why you would still need P U D code. Um, basically, the idea of the cottage courtyard, what we have, what we have called cluster subdivisions in the past allows you to have, um, a, a, um, a different type of, of development where, um, you could have smaller houses. They don't necessarily need to be smaller. But, um, they share common open space like a common backyard or a common front yard. And, and I have several different, um, examples of that. Um, we would need, and, and this would have to be a conditional use because we would need to review their plan and make sure that it, um, was not problematic. Um, the, uh, density restrictions was something that was brought up, was to make sure that you did not get into some sort of a high density type, um, cottage courtyard or cluster subdivision in a zone that would be inconsistent with otherwise what you could get in sort of density. So without having to go through all the different sections, it, it's limited to four single family residences per acre in an R one. So that's about a, that's, that's, that's four homes per acre. Six homes per acre in an R two, and ten homes per acre in an R three. It still needs the planned unit development code because you need to look at their, at their, um, their documentation of, of how the common area space is going to be managed. Are they going to have an HOA? Are they going to have C C Rs? How are we going to ensure that this is self-regulating? That this little tiny community, um, has the ability to, um, regulate itself, and we're not having the city step in and argue over who gets to plant a rose bush and who doesn't? They need to bring a plan of how this is going to work. Um, this is another, uh, picture of what a cottage courtyard looks like. This is another concept of the cottage courtyard. This is a very high upscale version of a common, of a cottage courtyard. I believe this is up north somewhere. That may be the only... No, I have one more. So these have been allowed in our, um, code as, what, what they, is referred to as cluster subdivisions for a while. And as we were reviewing what things fit in a rural done right, in a rural environment, the idea was that these things, um, still kind of fit a, an, a rural feel. It is a creative way to do, um, zoning. It's a creative way to do some density. Um, I imagine that, you know, if, if a, um, I, and I don't, I don't want to try to project onto different demographics, but if my mom wanted to have a little home and, and, uh, all of the, the, um, landscaping and everything was handled by the HOA and live in it, and be able to come out and socialize with neighbors and, and, and something like that. Or if they wanted to do a cluster subdivision that was a limited demographic, over a certain age or something like that, um, that's this concept. So again, it's always been in our code. We just are not getting rid of it. We're just saying, you can still do it. We're defining the density. And, um, to be consistent with approximately the density that's already allowed in those zones. And we're saying it still needs to be done using the planned unit development model. And it would have to go through that same process that we have recently been going through with, with a different planned unit development. So, and we want to make sure that they've, they've addressed things like additional parking. Um, if they don't have garages, then we want to see that there's going to be more parking, right? We don't want it to spill out onto the streets and affect the neighbors. We want to see how are they going to handle trash? How are they going to handle their, you know, their common space when it comes to maintenance? And how are they going to handle, you know, any of those things like that? So that's, that's the cottage courtyard. So that's the cottage courtyard. It's more of a modern phrase of cluster subdivision. So those are just staying in the code more than anything. Anyways, I think that answers all of the questions that were brought up in the public hearing. Chair?
Okay. Who has the screen now?
Oh, I do. I'll send it back to you, Kelly.
Um, can we pull up the proposed language?
Yeah.
So that we can kind of...
Do you have that, Kelly?
Yeah. So one of the things that I had a question with regards is these new definitions with the manuf, can you hear me? Sorry, with the manufactured homes and the manufactured home subdivision. If we look at our current code, under the 1504, the definitions, and you go down to mobile home and mobile home, single wide, double wide, mobile home lot, mobile home park, mobile home space, mobile home subdivision, and then modular home. I'm wondering if we need to revisit that because I think that they're kind of conflicting or not being defined clearly enough as to what is what. Because if with this definition of manufactured home, that could very well be a mobile home, but I think that there actually is, we're trying to create something that's different, unless I'm incorrect.
So I've been, I looked at that quite a bit. I think if there was one thing to, like, we don't have a definition of manufactured home and manufactured home subdivision.
Correct.
And we do need to make sure that it is consistent with itself and it makes sense. We have had a, we've been having quite a discussion about the mobile home planned unit development, which is also something that the planning commission just kicked up to the city council. And it has really come down to brass tacks and getting in the weeds of our code on the difference between the two. And the difference between the two really boils down to whether it is permanently affixed to the property with the affidavit of a fixture. That's about the only thing that I can see that really separates the two from a legal standpoint in our code. Because until it's affixed, it is mobile. Once it's affixed, it's treated like conventional housing. And that's the way it starts in our code of permitted uses in R1, R2, R3 right now, is it's a manufactured home and treated like a conventional home once it's affixed. And until that point, it's a mobile home. So I don't necessarily have a problem with leaving mobile home double wide, mobile home single wide, mobile home lot, mobile home park, mobile home space, mobile home subdivision if we define a manufactured home as being something that has been permanently affixed. And maybe we should just add that to the mobile home, manufactured home definition. That it is, manufactured home is a mobile home until it is permanently affixed to, using an affidavit of a fixture to a permanent foundation. And we just add that right there in the definition of manufactured home, and then we really don't have conflict, in my opinion.
I, oh, okay. I see him as totally two different things. I see a manufactured home as a single wide, a double wide, something that is more than 400 square feet, and whereas a mobile home, I see that as under 400 square feet.
So you're saying the definition of it is a square footage definition?
Square, yeah. Like, I think in, I mean, it doesn't, that was just one of the first things that was like when I saw that and I looked up our regular code, they seem to be very similar, but in my mind, manufactured home and mobile homes are two different things.
And I remember when we talked about this, when we revisited and essentially rewrote the RV code, we went into this in quite some detail. I remember there was a lot of research done by the planning commission, by our chair at the time, Larry, and it seemed like it was kind of all over the map on the definitions of the two. And it was like, we had, however many people are sitting up here, we had seven of us, and we were all, had probably a slightly different definition of what they were. So, I mean, by all means, we can, we can address it, but based on what? Because it seems like you couldn't get a, even if you were trying to go to a higher, we went to state code, and we looked at the dictionary, and it was like, what is the difference? For us, recently, it has all come down to whether it's permanently affixed or not. Because even a manufactured home, if it's still on wheels and has a trailer, it's not regulated as a conventional house until it gets affixed.
Right.
But we could add a, we could add a square footage, you know, definition to mobile home, but how big do mobile homes get nowadays?
I guess that's the thing is, is that a manufactured home, once it's affixed, it's approved by HUD, whereas even if something is under 300 or under 400 square feet, it's regulated differently.
Yeah.
It's regulated by a different, you know, organization.
But it's regulated from a financing standpoint, which I don't know if the city cares about. Whether somebody can get a loan on it, or this type of loan versus that type of loan, I don't know if we necessarily care about. I mean, it's not our job to regulate that. It is, if somebody can get a loan on something, this came up when we were talking about that subdivision, and why does it matter to us if that is, if something they can get a loan on or not? In the mobile home definition, it does say at the very last sentence of that mobile home definition paragraph, "Presectionalized modular or prefabricated homes not placed on a permanent foundation shall be regarded and regulated as mobile homes." That's consistent with our concept of, once it gets affixed...
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's like a conventional house. Once it isn't, if it is not yet affixed, it's still mobile.
I think we're talking about two different things. If you're talking about square footage as defining what is a mobile home and a manufactured home, that is different than, in my opinion, the legal definition of a mobile home versus a home, whether it's manufactured or permanent. It is permanently affixed, it's taxed as real property, anything that can, that's on wheels and a trailer, whether it's an 8,000 square foot home, I guess, if it's on a trailer, it's a mobile home. Anything that can be moved by the very definition of it is a mobile home. And it's, and the intent of that is, and you have mobile home parks, and you can pull your mobile home in, and you pay rent or a lease, and then, oh, I don't want to live here anymore, I want to go...
See, I guess that's what I'm trying to clarify is because mobile, I mean foothills is a mobile home park, but they're not on wheels. They were, but the wheels have been removed, just like a manufactured home.
Well, but they don't permanently affix them to the property and then do an affidavit and take it down and record it and...
I think foothills does.
With the recorder, with the county and say, okay, I now own this, it's permanently affixed. It could be, a mobile home can be a permanent structure in the right zone, and you own it. And, but it, but it's there, it's permanently attached, and you're not usually in a mobile home park. That means you can pull it out anytime you want. Does that make sense?
So do you think if we added the definition of the affidavit of a fixture to manufactured home...
Yeah, I would...
That two would be consistent with each other?
Yeah.
When it gets affixed legally, it's now a manufactured home, which gets treated as a conventional home. Before, until that point, it's a mobile home. That would be consistent with the law, with our current code? And, and we do have a definition for recreational coaches and recreational vehicles or RVs. We call that a vehicle, such as a travel trailer. Are we going to have a public comment period, or?
No, I guess not, sorry.
A vehicle such as a travel trailer, tent camper, camp car, or other vehicle with or without motive power designed and constructed to travel on the public thoroughfare in accordance with provisions of Utah Vehicle Code and designated for use as human habitation for a temporary or recreational nature. And I think we're probably good there because there is definitely, and I get the point is, because it gets vague, on one hand, all the way from a mobile, I mean, a manufactured home which gets permanently fixed, all the way through to RV which jumps up and moves all around the place, and anywhere in between, right? Something that came up recent, when we were talking about short-term rentals. Can you have a trailer and plop that down and call that a short-term rental, right? So anyways, don't want them out of the waters anymore.
Mm-hmm.
In my opinion, I think if we added that sentence, then it would be, it would be cleared. It's built on a permanent chassis, and it's designed to be used as a dwelling when connected to all utilities. If we added the thing of a permanent fixture by affidavit of a fixture, then it would be consistent back and forth throughout. The problem with that other conversation we've been having is that they didn't want to do the permanent fixture, which is why we had to discuss it as a mobile home planned unit development rather than a, just a standard planned unit development. So anyways. Kelly, if it's okay, let me switch over so I can control. I will type in things if we want to send a recommendation with certain wording in there.
Oh, yeah, that's good, thank you. Um, one of the other things that I just was looking at the rural done right overview and then also looking at the proposed language, I just want a clarification on the permitted uses in R1, R2, R3. Are we permitting manufactured homes to be on an individual lot or not? Because I was confused with the overview that was written because it says that we're restricting manufactured housing to only be in subdivisions that are requiring...
So I would say this, that marketing piece was written as we were looking at it. What we have in the codes is what is going to stick, right? The only thing that we have done in relation to manufacturing homes, manufactured homes in what the code that we've reviewed and gone through and now had a public hearing on is, they're treated like standard homes. You pop one in anywhere in the city, there's no regulation of it. As long as you put it on a permanent foundation and do that affidavit of a fixture, it's a home. The only thing that we wrote into the, that new section on manufactured homes was, if you have a subdivision that has more than 80% of manufactured homes, it needs a conditional use permit as a manufactured home subdivision. And the whole point of that, which I'll scroll to, I was going to write that sentence, don't let me forget. The whole point of it was just to make sure that if we are going to have a manufactured home subdivision, again, defined as 80% or more, then we wanted them to, the intent is to ensure that such developments align with the rural character of the community by avoiding uniform repetitive designs and meeting all applicable subdivision requirements. So basically, and then again, when it gets into the development standards, sorry, conditions for approval. It aligns with the rural aesthetic, does not create an adverse visual impact, adequate buffering and landscaping. No, that's not where it is. Hang on. Variation, okay, a site plan and elevations. Elevations are, you know, the pictures and examples of homes. Variation in home design and a layout, oh, I said we don't use the word cookie cutter and we do, to avoid a cookie cutter or tract home appearance. In other words, they couldn't just use one model and just put them in, they'd have to vary the models. And it says landscaping plans that ensure the rural character of the subdivision. And so really, the whole conditional use permit idea of a majority manufactured home subdivision is just that it breaks up the design of it a little bit so that you have, but other than that, it would be treated just like a standard subdivision.
And do, so that wouldn't necess, do we have any, I saw open space on there, so do we have open space requirements?
So that's another good point, which our open space requirement code, if you will, is pretty vague. We do reference it in the planned unit development code in a limited fashion. Of course, if we move forward with this, the only planned unit developments you're going to see is going to be cluster subdivision, mixed use commercial or just commercial. So we probably, I don't know if it's imperative that we address it if we're going to say no planned unit developments in the residential zones. The problem is, is do we want to have something in a standard subdivision that say, if you build X number, if you have a subdivision that's over 30 homes, you need to show some open space or something like that? We just don't have that. That came to light in the recent conversation with this large annexation for the AJM because we were talking about what we would like to have them provide in terms of park space or a contribution to Valentine Peak Sports Complex. And the developers engineer said, what does your code say that we have to do? And it doesn't. So I don't know if that answers your question. That's probably something for another day to decide we want to do it.
Well, can you scroll down a little bit because you have on here something about open space, just on the next page. Common areas and open space must be included?
As required by city subdivision regulations and the planning commission. Yeah, I know, and that same, this goes right back to the parking discussion. I liked having it in there, so should we develop a common space or open space requirement? We could easily point to it. And if not, at least at the planning commission stage, we could say, we'd like to see some. We could delete that and then add it back in if we decide to make some common space, or we can leave it as is and give you guys some latitude if they come in for a conditional use permit for one of them. I know specifically, it has come up with this other planned unit development that we're currently looking at. They, the city council has asked quite a few questions about recreation or open space, and I expect there to be some additional conversation there as well. Or the planning commission.
The city subdivision regulations, or...
Yeah. Well, the planning commission's going to want to see that they, that they follow what's required in the subdivision regulations as well, so, but yeah. But we could change that. We say and/or. Ooh.
So I'm...
Let me go adjust this real quick so I don't forget.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, with regards to the cookie cutter feel, one of the, which I totally get and I totally understand and agree with, I know that when Daybreak was developing, they also were not permitting the same style home, colors, various things right next to each other. So I don't know if that could be a reference that we want or could look at as to how they have it written up that's legal without, you know, because I know that there's, it's strict on what we're allowed to do and what we can't do.
What's Daybreak?
Daybreak is a huge communit, community up in, by Kennicott that developed, the whole huge community that has commercial, it has residential, it has high density, low density, and it was just a whole huge planned development area. And they also, in that, were regulating that you couldn't, because they didn't want that cookie cutter feel. They didn't want one house or one thing next to each other. And so I know that that's something that's been completed, that I don't know if it's a reference or not.
I just didn't, I know that, I cannot believe the irony of who I'm speaking to on this topic, it is the elephant in the room, but I don't know outside of a historic district... But I don't know outside of a historic district, I, I think we have to be careful asking for the color of homes.
No, I'm not saying-
But you just say it can be broken up?
No, I'm just saying that, that I know that they were, because we are not wanting that cookie cutter feel. That I know that that is an example-
Uh-huh.
-that has created a space. Those homes and the things I presented last time that were, looked like a single family home, but they were several different units.
Oh.
Those were all from Daybreak.
So we could say by, broken up by, by design or, and/or color or something like that. We're not, we're not saying we care what the color is.
And I'm not saying what the words are, I'm just, as you guys are doing this, that might be a reference because I know that we legally can't say you have to do XYZ.
It does say exterior finishes.
Right.
Yeah. Varied architectural styles, roof pitches and/or, and exterior finishes. Let's change that to an or. Exterior finishes to prevent a repetitive tract home appearance. Let's get rid of that cookie cutter.
I like cookie cutter.
No, just makes me hungry.
I know what that word means.
If the attorney says leave it in, let's leave it in, I don't care.
It doesn't hurt.
Oh, there we go. Um, I can just, I don't know if anybody else has anything, but I, just going over this, um, one of the things that I wanted to, um, revisit was, um, well, here, I'm at R1 in our, I, these don't have page numbers. I'm trying to look and see if I can direct you to, um, what was it?
I'm in R1 now.
Fifteen thirty.
Yep, yep.
Um, to provide areas of medium and low density, isn't R1 just low? Cause it's quarter acres.
Right, let's see, it says to provide areas of medium and low density. So we probably ought, let's just fix those two right now.
Yeah, so take that and out.
Make sure track.
Make it low, just low, yeah. And then R1 is staying at a thousand square foot minimum.
Let me fix the R2 real quick. Okay, sorry, where were we at?
So, um, R1, am I understanding correctly that we are, um, still ten thousand square foot lot and a thousand square foot minimum built, correct?
Correct.
One of the other things I wanted to just mention, I don't know if people wanna deal with it or not, is under conditional uses in these zones, 1, 2, and 3, we have golf courses. I'm just gonna mention that with water and such, I know we can address it with a conditional use, but do we really ever want to have and be able to offer that? I don't know, water is such a huge controversy.
I think our code addresses that.
It just has it under that it could be a conditional use and I'm just wondering if we're at this point, if anybody wants to talk about whether leaving it or removing it, removing golf courses entirely.
Yeah, that's funny, that stuck out to me too as I was going through this. And then I, I thought, okay, the purpose of this is rural done right. I did get out of the lines coloring when we were getting into the commercial stuff, um, of updating that. But I, if, I, I definitely think if it was under permitted, we would say that could be a red flag, um, under conditional. The, the problem with, as everybody knows, or maybe not everybody in the room, but a conditional use is something that, um, is very possible to be permitted as long as you can mitigate any of the, um, negative, um, the, I would say, relevant negative impacts. So if somebody comes in and they say, I've got five hundred acre feet of water and I'm building a golf course, um, I don't know how you could say, we think that's a horrible use of water, no, if it's in a conditional use permit. I, I don't think we could. I think that we would have to say, okay, let's mitigate anything else that's, that's relevant. And you'd say, let's, and they'd say, okay, I'll do water wise type grass, I will do, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, so it's a valid question. I don't know if it's rural done right, but we can definitely, while we're, we got the hood up and you guys wanna make a recommendation.
Well, I just don't know many rural-
Golf courses aren't high density.
Well, I just, I mean, I, you know, you're talking about rural done right, I don't know. I mean, I did see a golf course in Fillmore.
I like golfing.
But pretty much, I mean, that seems to be much more of a-
Maybe we oughta get Meisner to build out golf course instead of do houses.
Okay, so I'll take that as, doesn't matter, okay. All right, so then, um, the next thing is R2 and, um, R3. I wanted to revisit the minimum square footage and I wanted to propose, um-
Of the home, of the building or the lot?
Building.
Okay.
Of the building, yes, thank you for that clarification. Right now we have, um, R2 as, I have it here highlighted somewhere, eight hundred and fifty square feet. I would, um, suggest that we drop that a little bit to seven hundred square feet. Um, it is a smaller lot, um, it, I think we'll, if we lower it a little bit, it's gonna then also provide more availability and opportunity to people to be able to build and to have starter homes.
You're talking about a single family dwelling, right?
Correct, yes.
We did do that with the twin and the duplex.
Yep, just the, I'm just talking about a single family dwelling on, in R2 from eight hundred and fifty to seven hundred, um, square feet.
I thought there was quite a discussion on that.
We talked a lot about the twin homes and duplexes. We had it at five hundred, we bumped it, we figured that was really small in an R2.
Jamie Barnett had quite a position on that.
But I didn't think we dealt with the single family residential.
We, I don't think we did.
I don't, I thought we did.
Not that, not that I can recall, doesn't mean it didn't happen. Some of these meetings get pretty long.
Yeah, and so with that, um-
But what does everybody else think? If everybody's good with that, I'll just change it.
So with the, I can give you my, um, logic or, or reasoning behind it. Um, seven hundred square feet, um, would provide, um, a starter home that could be a manufactured home. There are several models that go, you know, up from seven hundred up to a thousand square feet. There would, that would give them, um, give people an option besides obviously a stick build from the ground up. But, um, it would give a little bit more opportunity.
So you, you, I think I heard you say seven fifty and then seven hundred.
I'm, I said, no, it was eight fifty to seven hundred, dropping it a hundred and fifty square feet. Does anybody have any feelings either way on that?
I think you're getting pretty little.
That's, yeah. Wait till you hear what I have to say about R3.
Maybe we don't wanna hear it.
No?
We can, we can, we, we can deal with it, I mean, if there's a division of the opinion, we can deal with it with the motions when we get to that point.
Well, could, could you go back and what's the lot size again? Could we just-
Seven hundred, seven, seven thousand two hundred and fifty or seven thousand five hundred?
So it, it changes based on what you're building. If you're building a single family dwelling, the lot size drops to seventy-five hundred. If you're gonna build a twin home or a duplex, you have to have ten thousand. With, if it's a twin home with separate ownership, five thousand on either side of the common wall.
But, but you're talking about a single family.
Correct.
Now, we're talking single family, so we're talking a seventy-five hundred square foot lot.
So you're not changing the lot size, you're just changing the minimal-
We're just talking the minimum house size.
Minimum, not to say you can't build a three thousand square foot home on that lot.
Yep.
It's just that it would, if you lower it, it just gives a little bit more opportunity for options of people that could get into homeownership.
What's the minimum?
Was, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say that was the concession with going to smaller lots and having homes of common law.
And if you look at the homes that are in this rural area, a lot of them were eight hundred square feet less. I mean, you think of Pioneer Homes and how small they were. I think it fits with, um, what we're trying to preserve and to keep, in my opinion.
Well, I don't think we're going back to Pioneer days.
But if somebody wants a home, and then they could do it that way.
And then you don't have closets or anything else.
Oh, I mean, I can show you an example of a seven hundred square foot, um, manufactured home, or it's actually, I think, seven forty something. Okay.
What, what is the minimum size for an EADU unit?
Uh, I think we put it at four hundred and seventy-six.
It's no greater than half the size of the primary dwelling and the minimum it can be is four hundred and seventy-six.
You're getting very close to that with a single family dwelling, if we go down to seven hundred.
Well, you, you couldn't, if you, say you built that seven hundred square foot home, you couldn't do an EADU.
No, you couldn't.
It would make it smaller than the minimum.
So at eight fifty, we could still do an EADU.
Eight fifty you couldn't.
You have to be nine hundred, huh?
Take four seventy-six times two and that's the smallest you could have and still have an EADU.
Yeah, so that doesn't change that.
What is that, nine hundred and fifty-two? Guess I'm not as tired as I thought I was.
Well, I'll just state what I was gonna say about R3 is actually I would, um, propose that we, cause those lots are six thousand square feet, um, not have a minimum square footage requirement, which is what R3 was before. Um, and if that isn't a, appealing, um, then I was thinking three hundred square feet.
Then you're into tiny homes.
Yeah.
Correct, on a lot that somebody can own and have a home.
Or a fraction of a home.
Is that accomplishing what we're trying, the rural done right? Conducive with the integrity of our city?
I don't, uh, I don't see how that's, um,
So I think we can, I think we can address this with, um, let's address this with motions. Cause I can see a difference of opinion.
We've discussed this before and at this point-
Yeah.
Seems to be a difference of opinion and so the proper way to proceed would be for a motion to amend what was discussed before. With you, uh, making the argument for smaller homes and what I recall as the majority of the commission not wanting to do that. So if somebody would wanna make a motion to amend it before it goes to the city council, I think that would be a way to resolve it and move forward as opposed to debating the utility of smaller homes on smaller lots.
I guess what, the only thing I was thinking of was that since we're eliminating, um, us housing, um, opportunity-
Sure.
-in town homes and condos and things that can, um, that this could be, just that slight modification would open the doors more or, because if we're going to more, just only single family homes, um, it just opens the door and the opportunity to more people.
And that's a valid argument and a policy proposal that if there's a motion for it, then there you go, but-
And I, and I, there's no hard rule that the chair can't make a motion. Usually the chair calls for motions, but we don't have a hard rule against it. So I'd say if you wanna make a motion, go for it.
Um, I make a motion, um, that we propose an, a change to, well, the proposed language for R2, for the minimum, single family dwelling unit to be seven hundred square feet. Um, and our, that's an R2, and then in R3, for the minimum, uh, square footage for a single family dwelling unit be three hundred square feet. And if there's no second, then it dies.
I'm just curious if there's any other motions on that topic or we just leave it like it is and move on to the next thing.
Okay, so I think we had everything else with the, do we need to discuss the, the gas pumps and all that? Or was everybody?
Well, I think there's a few things that we do need to, um, we did fix them, high density, medium density. Um, do we wanna do the EADUs as permitted uses? Um, I can do that really quickly if everybody's comfortable with that. Um, we, we're already permitting them, we just need to, we just need to add it in as a permitted use. Um, and then we can talk about the, the gas pumps, parking.
Um, Dan, I would like to bring up one thing that I don't know if it was really addressed, but Cindy Smith, um, her first question was about short-term rental, owner living on the property. And she had a good question about that.
Um, yeah, and, and I, and my, my answer to that was, we're not addressing any of that in what we're doing right now, but we will be addressing that when we, when we actually do the short-term rental code.
Okay.
So rural done right is bigger than what we're doing tonight. There's also a, one of the things that we talked about doing in rural done right was a first-time home buyer program to do some incentives for a first-time home buyer. We talked about, um, the sewer code thing which was done. We talked about potentially amending the annexation map, which is obviously another process. And we talked about short-term rental. I may be missing one other aspect of it, but what we're doing tonight is just, just addressing the zoning code, so.
The biggest thing with the short-term rental was that we were wanting to not have corporations coming in and buying up our housing. So that was kind of where that whole owner on-site-
Came from.
Came from.
Right, yeah, and I think she just brought a good, valid point because it does-
Yeah.
-create a challenge, yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely deal with it.
But yeah, that's come, we still have to work on that.
And we will invite Cindy to come, share her opinions on that as we're working on that code for sure. I, I know she, she knows more than most in that space, so. Scott, would you say that would be an appropriate way to write that, consistent with and then point it to the code fifteen forty-nine?
And where are you putting that under?
I'm gonna put it in permitted in all of them.
In our-
In all the zones.
Including general?
Just, just in the, um, in the residential zones. I guess we'll have to see if they, we can double check that.
Can we let Larry talk? He had his hand up.
Yeah, you are the chair, I, I just, yeah.
You have to come to the mic though.
I think to be consistent with the, um, EADU code, the word after external is accessory, not additional.
Oh, yes, it is.
Unless you're making a conscious change to-
And is that, um, only external or does that refer to IADUs as well?
No, cause we, we've, do we have a separate section on IADUs?
I don't, I don't remember, we'd have to look at-
We did.
We have separate IADU code and, or internal.
We could put them in there, we could do the same thing and say they're permitted as whatever. Wouldn't be a bad idea.
I, I think the only one that's inconsistent is the external when I looked at it today. Internal is almost standalone. Um, you could go back and look at it, but, um, external is the one that specifically says it has to say in the code.
Yeah, we have, um, fifteen forty-five, which is the internal, and fifteen dot forty-nine, which is external.
Fifteen dot what for the internal?
Do we need a motion for that or is that just? Do we need a motion for that or is that just administrative kind of?
I think if we're all on the same page-
Okay.
We can just do it.
Um-
Unless there's a division on that.
Okay, ADU, R two to medium.
Sorry, everybody get a little sick.
I know, you gave me a headache last time. And then parking u- parking code and stuff is for future, is that what we agreed upon?
Yeah. Oh.
And then, yeah, then that's parking emergency, so that we'll have to come back to revisit. Can we say no more gas stations in Parowan?
Hey, we haven't recruited any gas stations. That's the only thing I wanna say about that.
We can just eliminate all the gas pump stuff, there's just no more allowed. Okay, um... I was gonna pull up the agenda. Okay.
I think that gets our EADU code and internal ADU code, accessory, not additional.
Does anybody else have anything, oops, anything else that, um-
Oh, so I was gonna say, we need to decide if we want to, um, as we're sending this forward to city council to adopt that, um, downtown commercial zone as a zone. It won't make it allowable anywhere because it's not, it's not on our zoning map anywhere. But while we're making these changes, put it in there.
Recommend, not adopt, not-
Recommend to add, yep.
Dan, that doesn't, uh, insinuate the extension of the historic district on Main Street, does it?
No, it, if I remember, we'll double check it. Downtown commercial, I think it just points, special consideration is given to design aesthetics to ensure compatibility with the historic preservation overlay. The way that the overlay district works, we also have an airport overlay, is you have your zones and then the overlay can cross zone boundaries as that overlay district does. So they're not related, this just refers to it and say, says that, because we know that our downtown is, in, and a lot of our downtown is part of the historical district. But we could define, we could put downtown commercial anywhere we wanted to as, if we're rezoning, doing the re- the map. And this just refers to, um, it'd be compatible with a historic preservation overlay where that happens.
So if there was a desire to extend that later, that could be done later.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. Two totally different things is the definition of that zone or that, yeah, that overlay district shape and where we decide to put this on the map, if we do ever in the future.
That's the commercial.
The downtown commercial.
Downtown commercial.
Right now, as of right now, even if we adopt it with this chapter fifteen thirty-seven in, nothing in there would apply. The only thing that would apply would be what is, what this is, chapter fifteen thirty-six, general commercial. So I guess, you know, what we're really looking at is, is what does that look like? And it's gonna be very similar to our existing general commercial, um, modified a little bit.
Thank you.
To allow for mixed use, which right now you can't do.
Um, I wanted, um, some clarification 'cause of my ignorance. Um, so like, the annexation that has R one, R two, and R three.
You're talking about the A- the AJM?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
When they come in, and if that's approved and everything, when R two comes in, what are those lot sizes? Are they, if this all passes and everything, is it coming in at the lot size of seventy, seven hu- what is it, the-
Seventy-five hundred?
Uh, seventy-five hundred?
Mhm.
How does that work when our double, our, um, duplexes or whatever are requiring ten thousand square feet? How does that-
So it's done at the subdivision level. When they want to subdivide their lots, they could subdivide them into seventy-five hundred square foot lots. If they do, they can only put a single family home on.
Okay, so it's at that step, okay.
Yep, yep.
That's where I was not understanding.
Just like right now, um, like, like let's, if this passes, there's a lot, in fact, I'd say the bulk of Old Town Parowan is, on the zoning map is that banana yellow color, which is R two. Somebody comes in tomorrow and says, "I wanna build a duplex," we're gonna say, "Okay, do you have a quarter acre?" After this. If they come in today, actually if they come in today, what we do here will matter. But had they come in before we started this process, we would've said, "Okay, you have to have a thirteen thousand square foot."
Right.
But in any place. So whatever we do would, would apply there. And, and at that point, they would decide what they're gonna do based on how large this lots they do. Now, having said that, let's say that, and the, and the developer in that case has mentioned that they're not going to be building all the homes in that, in-
Right, that's why I was-
They're gonna be, they're, but, but when they divide the lots into certain sizes and sell them, if they divide them into ten thousand square foot lots, whoever buys that lot could build a twin home if they wanted to, they'd have to further divide it. Or they could, or they could buy a ten thousand square foot lot and put a single house on it, you know, right? That's gonna be up to whoever buys it and, and they're just gonna be limited by this lot size.
I didn't know if they were having to, um, distinguish that before it was sold, if it was seventy-five hundred or ten thousand or, or whatever, okay.
No, just lot size would restrict what could be done by who, the buyer.
Okay.
Now, if they sell a ten thousand square foot lot and then the buyer wants to build a twin home, the buyer's gonna have to further subdivide that lot into two five, five thousand square foot sides and bring in a half acre of water.
More water. And more water.
Or pay the development fee. That's the one exception that they could pay the development fee, so.
Okay.
'Cause the developer will bring us the water rights when the subdivision's created.
All right, is there any other recommendations or discussion on the, the supposed, proposed amendment on rural done right? And take the silence as no?
I don't think so. I mean, I have my reservations about it, but at the end of the day, it's my definition of rural is very different than, I think, what the council has put together here, so, but I'm not gonna get in their way by having a def- difference of definition of a word.
Um, so with this, um, recommendation to city council, we are also needing to include the adoption of DC one zone, is that correct? Or is that something different?
Yeah, I mean, i- it's-
Or do we have to do them separate?
It's included in the whole-
Okay.
Thing, so I'd say if we just adopt all the code as currently written, I mean, make a recommendation to adopt all the code as currently written, we are effectively creating that zone. At the point you amend the general plan, there's that additional step of, of implementing that zone. It's pretty common to see zones that are in your zoning code that find, that don't find their way onto a map. Or, or an old zone that used to be allowed that stays in your zoning code because people are grandfathered to it or something like that. Um, so I don't, I don't know, Scott, legally, if you have a problem with having that zone adopted in the language, even though it's nowhere on the map, without updating the general plan? Mister attorney?
I'm sorry, I was looking up what's up.
I said, "Do you have any problem if we adopt this new zone in our code, this downtown commercial, even though we're not updating our general plan, it's nowhere on the map, we're just putting it in text? At the point we update our general plan and the, and the zoning map, we could be the first time we would institute it."
We can work on it either and, tonight, I think we're just recommending to the city council, I'm sure they will have discussions and-
They may hate this. Right.
As well. No, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so if we don't have any further, um, discussion, um, I need a positive or negative recommendation, um, to city council on the proposed amendments to Title fifteen, rural done right. You guys are gonna probably, 'cause I don't think Shane and I are gonna do it, so somebody else has to do it.
Not me.
How do you feel? Do you want, um, a positive, are you posi- like, a positive recommendation to them or a negative recommendation? We as a committee, that's all we can do. And then we can vote on it.
We could do a neutral one.
No, we cannot. I will not let that happen again. We are not here to be neutral and this is too huge of a thing for us to nonchalantly, yeah. We have to give our feelings and if your feelings are negative, then we give a negative recommendation. If your feelings are positive, then we do a positive.
I like that, stick with your guns.
It's too big.
Recognizing that the city council's the one that asked for this, but that's why you get to send a-
Yeah, we did not, this is not coming from us, I, YouTube, this is coming from city council. So we worked on it and we've put our input into it and now it's, uh, a motion. If no one's gonna give a motion, then I will. I give a negative recommendation to city council on adopting the proposed amendment of Title fifteen, rural done right. I will need a second.
Dies for lack of a second.
Dies for lack of a second.
And can call for the questions. Does anyone wanna make a positive recommendation?
Would, I, I think I have been asking that. Would anyone like to please make a positive recommendation?
I move to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I move to table this until, for further investigation and consideration.
That's not gonna fly, I don't think. Um, I, we can, we can table it, we can further investigate it, but, um, I don't think that was the timeline we were given. So, I mean, I am more than happy to work on this more, um, I don't, wanna be curious to see what changes you would like to-
I think the R, uh, two is a little tight.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you clarify? I don't know what you mean by tight.
Lot size.
Oh, the lot size, okay.
Dropping it. I like the PUD part, um, making that conditional.
PUD, our current PUD code?
No, the proposed, making them only conditional. Restricting them more. As far as apartment buildings all over R two that go on for two blocks, I like the idea of putting those somewhere else.
Well, we're not gonna perm- permit apartment buildings.
I know, it omits it.
No, it-
I'm saying I like that.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Oh, okay. I thought you were sa- saying, I was hearing that differently, sorry. I was hearing the opposite and I'm like, "But I think it is."
Right. I said that's a part I like.
Okay.
Can, can I make a comment on this? So I will tell you, one of the things that I think I'm struggling with is that there's been a lot of changes. It's a large code and, um, frankly, just even formatting, been difficult to follow. And so for me to put a vote to it, I actually would like it to see it cleaner and, and maybe, I don't know, break some of these, some of this apart so that it's not just all running together.
I can definitely clean it up. The, the advantage of, of its current format is just that it shows the differences. And that's why we usually leave it like this, so that we can keep track of what's being modified and what's staying the same.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
But I can definitely clean it up.
But I just think like we keep putting things in different areas and then we're, um, trying, it just is a lot to approve at one time. And I don't know if it can be broken up a little bit more in chunks that we can more digest it a little bit better. Um, but I just know in some ways I, I feel a little confused.
So I can, I can also create, um, and, and if you remember, let me just real quick, sorry, I have to go all the way to the, the end. Somebody tells me how to do this in one shortcut, that would be great. But I can create a summary page as well. We, we started with a summary page, um, that kind of puts it on a table. This, this has now been slightly modified, but I can create a new summary page to show what it looks like so you can kind of see R one, R two, R three, how do the, how does it, how does this lot sizes change? How does the building sizes change, what's allowed in the zone before and after and all that stuff? If you'd like, I can create an, an updated version of this that would be consistent with the document we worked on. Would that help?
This would be helpful.
So I guess, Wes, you wanna make-
There was a motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, was there a motion, Wes made a motion, correct, to table this?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. I guess we will, um, I would ask that over the next two weeks in between to, if, one, Dan, if you can get us a-
Get that out ASAP.
Clear it up, um, and go by it, line by line and, um, really put what you like, what you don't like, and that we can work through it because I know city council was really wanting to vote on this next week, so. Yes. Right, correct, is that, as a, as a panel?
Not as a group.
Next meeting, okay.
Yep.
Not as a group.
Okay, um, now we get the wonderful joy of hearing about all of the legislative updates from Dan.
Chair, I apologetically am gonna ask that we table this.
Okay.
I, I wanna spend some time with Keith. Keith went to a training. He has been since last week at an event, um, getting, getting a big certification. I'm sure his mind is fried. I have been to a couple of trainings. We haven't had time to get together and to work on this. Um, so if we could table this to the next meeting, we can bring you a much better and concise-
Okay, we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Make a motion that we table for this evening until our next meeting, the legislative up- Make a motion that we table for this evening until our next meeting, the legislative updates, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, so we will work on that, um, as well, or no, you will be prepared to inform us
Yep.
next, um, time.
I think it's the first time I've seen Keith in about ten days.
Have you been, have you been, I was gonna say, have you been going through withdrawals, Dan?
Uh, Keith, Keith has been loving it.
Um, okay, so, we are now at member and staff reports, um, we'll start with Dave Burton, do you have anything?
I do. We have a lot that's been brought before us right now, this council, and I was in hopes that we would be able to respond and act on this. We have a public hearing, and I think you've had enough time to disseminate this. And we're faced with decisions that are based upon this being enacted. And there's serious decisions, and I, you know, I've heard a lot here, and I know, you can, well, you can do what you want with me, but I have come here and I've heard a lot of times where you haven't even looked at it, you didn't even know about rural done right. It, I just don't think that you've done due diligence.
That, that's not on us, first time, you, that's not on us, you gotta
I
The timeline has been
Well, that's my opinion, and I'm, we're faced with a, a lot that I think that this was
I agree.
We had a public hearing, did you hear what was said? I didn't hear anything, I heard that there's some villagers, I heard, I didn't hear any community people that were here speaking against this.
We're, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get bullied by you, councilman.
I'm not going, I, I'm speaking my opinion. I'm not bullying you, I am making a statement, because I have a responsibility, and it is based upon this committee being able to, you know, perform, so, be it.
Get us the info and we'll perform.
You had it.
Nope, disagree strongly.
Well, I don't think this is member and reports, this is just
Yeah.
an argument, I think we're, we're not being very productive with this.
Tracy, anything?
No.
Shane?
No.
Dan?
Uh, nope.
Um, I had a question that I'm just gonna propose, if it can't be answered right now, um, if legal could please look at it. Um, it's, um, code fifteen dot forty-nine dot O two O, um, I guess it is now being utilized to permit building on lots less than ten thousand square feet, and, um, my reading of it is one interpretation, and it's being interpreted a different way, and so just would love you, if you would look it over, and maybe bring us some clarity to it next week, and I can send you that code specifically.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, in that case, Wes, jump on it?
Weston, please.
Weston, I'm sorry.
I make the motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
A second, 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 sorry.
Second it.
Tracy seconded, all in favor, aye.
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 All right, let's go home.